If you're not at a confidence level or comfort level where you're ready to consider approval of the plan, then one of the actions that you would take would be to either table or the action to a future meeting. So you can have further time to consider it or deliberate or discuss. Or you could, if you do want us to make changes to the building, you could provide direction on changes you want us to make. So we could go back and make those changes. So that's, I guess, the first question is whether or not the council is ready to consider the documents for approval.
Because I'd like to hear from Fred whether all his concerns were adequately answered.
Put me on the spot, Richard.
That's what I'm here for.
I don't know a lot about consensus in the rest of the group.
Okay, well, the rest of the group was not all there on Friday. Mainly me. I threw my back out and was not able to get there. So I'm not sure if all that happened with the discussions. I know you had several points that were all addressed and adequately that you felt satisfied.
I want to say this, Richard, you were here for four and a half hours.
Okay, so there was certainly some discussion.
There was certain time coming up to that.
Okay. And by the look on your face, they were not all adequately addressed.
I'm ready to move forward, Richard.
Okay.
I most certainly am also.
All right, and we certainly understand that the effort it's taken to get to this point. We certainly appreciate the work that council has put in, especially that lengthy work session last Friday. We did share a lot of good information and a lot of good discussion at that meeting. So moving on then to the second page of the memo. If we're going to consider approval of the plan specifications, part of the approval is the council needs to specifically identify what alternates you want included in the project and what order you want those included.
Right. I do want to emphasize that we had quite a bit of discussion that night about possibly reconfiguring the parking lot, the number of parking stalls, the amount of public parking as opposed to firefighter parking. And as it says here in item two here, that changes to the number of parking stalls or size configuration of the parking lot would not be considered a major change.
Correct.
So we are accepting that.
Yes, yeah.
Will.
We'll take that direction from you.
Bid that as a, what is it called, a unit? Per unit.
Actually, we'll adjust the, any change we make to the parking lot would become part of the base bid. If we reduce the number of stalls, we simply would issue that as an addendum to the contractors letting know that the plan for the parking lot has been altered and now bid off of this.
So we'll probably address that matter right now before we move on to the alternates. My feeling that night was that we had a fairly good consensus to reducing the public park into a bid over half what it was originally.
And actually, Mr. Mayor, if you turn to the next page of the memo, I've got it laid out where I'd like to actually address the alternates first.
I see.
The alternates first, then the unit price work, and then the minor changes. Correct. So the alternates are specifically identified in the documents. There's a base bid that the contractors bid on. And then if there's alternates, they provide separate prices on the alternates. And the council can then choose if it wants to accept any combination of the alternates as part of the contract award. So we need to specifically identify those and put them in the order that you want them to be. Now, through the two design meetings that we had, there were five alternates identified. And if you turn back, well, I had them listed there. I've also got the page under the spec, but we can just go off the memo. Alternate number one that had been identified was to install flagpoles with lighting with the building. Alternate number two was the entrance treatment with the columns and the canopy, that kind of the red aesthetic elements at the front entrance of the building. Alternate number three was the interior LED lighting. The base bid would be fluorescent. The alternate would be to upgrade that to the LED lighting. Alternate number four was the roofing system. The base bid includes the rubberized roofing system that's just held down through the weight of the rocks, the ballasted system. The alternate would be to upgrade to a fully glued, where the membrane is actually glued to the top of the building.
That alternate really doesn't increase the lifespan of the roof?
No, it increases the cost.
The cost and resistance to wind there.
Correct, right.
And that cost more to tear it up again.
That's true as well, yep. Alternate number five was solid surface countertops. And this was for the kitchen cabinets and the bathroom cabinet tops. The base bid would be a plastic laminate. And the alternate would upgrade that to a solid surface, solid countertop. From the discussion we had at the work session last Friday, a couple of other ones that were potentially identified were the finishes on the exterior concrete wall panels. And then the kitchen cabinets and sink. If we wanted to keep those in the project or just simply finish the walls of the kitchen and stub in the plumbing and then leave the cabinets and the sink to do for a later time. So there's seven potential ones that we need to work through, identify which of those we want as alternates and what order we want them in. And if you look down at items C, D, and E are some guidance. Add alternates per the USDA requirement should be listed in the order that you're likely to be accepted. So the thing that you think you're most likely to accept should be alternate number one. We really should only list them if there's a realistic chance that we think we're going to accept them. Because it does take effort for the contractors to prepare those bids. And the more alternates, the more work it is for them to put together. And that gets added numbers, item E is we recommend a maximum of six alternates. If we get too many alternates, we could scare some contractors away because they may see this as a project where we're complicating the bid too much and they may choose not to bid on it. Also, it makes it very complicated for the council to consider all those alternates because we'd have such a large number of combinations. And the other thing with the alternates is that we really, it takes a lot of effort and cost on the contractor's part to put those together. So we really don't want to, the notion is that you don't want to use alternates just as price shopping. You never want to take bids just to get a price from a contractor. If you're going to have an alternative, you should be serious about it. So that being said, if we look at the alternates, my thought is from the discussion we've had, the LED lighting, we know it's more expensive investment upfront, but from the rebate information that we've gotten as we went through the plans and Mr. Mayor, from the information you gained, you got last week from, I'm not sure, Energy Insight. The payback system on the estimated cost, estimated increased cost, the payback system was between seven and eight years.
Correct.
So that one, I feel is one.
I would put that as number one.
There's a high likelihood that the city would accept that because in the long run.
In fact, I feel so strongly about it, I almost be applying to
Not have it in the base bid.
Not have it as an alternate, but just to.
We certainly could make it the base bid.
That's up to the other members here, but I feel so strongly that that's something we should do for a number of reasons. It's the way of the future. And as I pointed out, it also helps KMU with the.
SIP program.
Yeah, the SIP program. Which we've been having a hard time generating enough take up from commercial customers. This would be a big one that would help a lot on that.
Yeah, I had.
But if it is to be an alternative, that would be the absolute favorite one. Otherwise, the order of these is, I think, in the correct order. Moving the LEDs to top or including a part of the bid and leaving it was under first by in order with the possible exception of eliminating the countertop.
Solid surface countertops?
Especially since we get down to move a alternate B2 to kitchen cabinets, I would say just let that go rough in, that can be easily done in the future with local contractors, local sources of appliances. And it's not something that's really a core part of the function of the building. Nice to have, but we can't always have.
The building could open without it.
We can't always have the nice to have things.
Yeah, and again, the estimate, the estimated cost of those kitchen cabinets was about $18,000. So that's something you could take right off the top. You'd spend it later when you go to do it, but you could hire a local contractor to do it yourself. So taking your comments into consideration, Mr. Mayor, let's go through these in order. And we'll identify them as yes or no, and then we'll put them in order. So let's start with the LED lighting. I agree, my recommendation was going to be to move that to number one because I think we've got documentation that shows that it's a net positive dollar wise for the city in the long run. So I guess the question is, do you want it as an alternate or would you rather just include it in the base bid?
I don't know, opinions?
I'd like to include it in the base bid.
I agree. Well, that would be easy.
Okay, so that would be base bid. Yeah.
So Joe, one thing I wanted to bring up when we talk about these alternates. There is kind of a, there's kind of a point with these alternates. And I kind of tend to think that point is five, where you get too many of these things and I think it becomes a little less attractive for bidders.
Yeah.
So I'm not real excited about seven alternates when we put a bid out there. I'm more excited about four or five. And I'm just throwing that out kind of as a recommendation.
We're already down to six by putting the LEDs as part of the base bid.
Right, so I'm just saying, kind of keep that in mind.
Let me talk about, the next one I wanted to bring up was the solid surface countertops. The estimated value of that is about $8,000 to $10,000. And from a realistic standpoint, do you see a scenario where you would accept paying the increased cost to get those? You know, for example, we all want the project to come in, you know, as low price as possible. So let's say we get a good bid and it comes in $75,000 under our estimate. And this alternate is $10,000 to put the countertops on. Do you realistically see a scenario where you would authorize spending that $10,000 to do the countertops? Or would you say, we want to take that full $75,000 savings and keep the project costs low?
I know that one.
See, and that's what I mean by we want to be realistic. If we realistically don't see a scenario where we accept that, then we shouldn't even have it as an alternate.
Yeah, it would be pretty rough in the kitchen.
Well, that would mean less countertops. It'd only be in the bathrooms, but still. It's not such a high traffic area that I think that's really worth it. If it was a hotel, it would be a different situation. It'll still be a nice countertop. Won't be as durable or won't get as much use as a public area.
Correct, yeah. How often will those restrooms be used?
If you're talking about a hotel, maybe we make a little bit of money back by having a bed and breakfast.
No, I do not think so.
You're just a one house. Potentially, there's going to be some noise.
Well, and you look at this countertop that we're sitting on right here tonight, this is a laminate countertop.
Right.
So this would be the base bid that we have in there. And it really was identified because we were looking for opportunities to try and reduce costs. And we had identified that going from a solid countertop down to a laminate, couple of cost savings. We kept it in as a potential alternate, but if we realistically don't see a scenario where we accept it, then I would recommend we just strike it.
Personally, I would, I would say take off.
I would like to strike it, yeah.
So that one's all.
We're already down to five.
The entrance treatment, I think that one is a material change to the building. And it's a large enough cost where I think that one is valid to have as an alternate.
As an alternate, yes.
Correct, yeah. The fully adhered roof system, I guess that's a question. Again, do we see a scenario where we would want to pay the extra cost to upgrade from the ballasted system to the adhered system?
Personally, I haven't put the flagpoles above that alternate actually because I don't really see a great payback for it. It's, we're not in a tornado alley and especially in that location. I don't think wind is a real large hazard.
You get some straight line winds, but.
Oh, it can happen anywhere.
Yes.
My crystal ball quit working years ago.
I still have a somewhat functioning one, not very well, but. How much would we save insurance wise? Does insurance care whether we have fully adhered or ballasted?
That's a question I can't answer.
I don't know that on time in there. Could be a dollar saving there, but.
Well, when it comes time to replacement, it'll cost more for it. To tear it up, because it's glued down. And short of a disastrous wind, that depends. Play in the pine wood.
That's a 50-year roof you're talking about, is that correct?
I believe it is.
Either way, yes.
Yeah.
They're both 50 years.
Either way?
Both ways are 50 years.
Yes.
One is just rock.
And how much of the savings if we just went with the tar deal?
That was never part of the plan.
Yeah, I think that's a different category.
If you actually really does tire roofs anymore, it's pretty much all gone to the membranes.
Yeah, okay. I guess it's like that question again, do we realistically see a scenario where we would want to, where we would pay that upgraded cost? And the cost estimate began.
That was a lot.
Stand a lot.
Yeah, roofing system, the estimated cost was $35,000 to go from the ballasted system to the adhered system. So again, if our bids came in, say, $75,000 or $80,000 low, would we want to spend $35,000 of that savings to get the upgraded roof system?
I'd say no.
I don't think so unless there's some idea on the insurance cost.
A both 50-year, John?
Yes, both are 50-year.
Well, we can set it aside for now and work through the others and see. Like you say, if we come down to only three or four alternates, we can leave it in as the third or fourth alternate. Going down to alternate number seven, the kitchen cabinets. Mr. Mayor, you, it sounds like your recommending, or your thinking or recommendation may be just to take them totally out of the project, not even have them as an alternate, just plan to do them later?
Rough in the plumbing, wiring and.
And finish the sheet rock, paint the walls, get it all finished. Okay. So not even have it as an alternate?
I think that was, I think that's a consensus. Doug's nodding.
Yep.
Yeah, a little bit of that.
Exactly. Come in, and it doesn't, yeah, it wouldn't stop you from opening the building when the building's ready. No, no, okay. So it sounds like that one's just stricken altogether. Wouldn't it be an alternate, okay? So at this point now, we're down to four, right? Because add alternate number three, the LED lighting, we move that into the base bid. The solid surface countertops, we've stricken altogether. Kitchen cabinets and sink, we've stricken altogether. Okay, so now we're down to the flagpoles, the entrance treatment, the roof system and the wall panels. That's a reasonable number. If you wanted to keep all four of those, we could. If you want to move any of those back into the base bid or strike them altogether, we certainly could do that as well. But if you want to keep these four, then we just have to choose what order we're most likely to accept them.
What was the deal with the exterior wall panel finish?
That was the, when they cast the panels, what they do is they prepare the form bed and they cast the panels facedown in the bed. They can put liners in the forms to create the appearance of brick or exposed rock or, you know, fluted exteriors. And there were surface treatments identified in the plans that were going to be put on the panels. And the question was if we just had them cast plain panels instead, would there be a material cost savings? And we've gotten an estimate from one of the suppliers. And we don't want to give the exact number because obviously if they quote the project, we don't want to, you know, tip their hand. But it's probably somewhere less than $10,000 would be the savings.
Overall?
Overall, correct. To do the finishes versus just plain panels. So it's no more labor out at the job site. Everything is cast in the panel at the plan before the panels are even delivered to the site. It's just the labor involved in setting up the form, the finish.
And there was that possibility of the thin brick.
Thin brick, correct. One of the suppliers that we've talked with actually has a thin veneer brick. I actually might have a picture that we could, we showed a picture on Friday, Richard.
Yeah.
Can you use your microphone? So you can see, these are how the wall panels come up, that's a plain finish. This is a sandblasted finish. And this is one where the aggregate is exposed. And there's also a pattern making over it looks like brick. Which is what tends to be a lot of part of.
Put in at a time.
Okay. This particular supplier says he's got these thin brick, they're actual brick, but they're very thin. And rather than using a form liner in the bed, they physically lay those bricks in the bottom of the bed. And when they cast the panel, the bricks are actually cast into the concrete. And he said, he's got such a good deal on these, he can actually do that cheaper than the form liner itself. So you get actual bricks for less price than just the brick appearance. So that's.
It would be more expensive than just a plain.
Correct, yep.
Then you got to maintain the paint on every occasion.
Well, should, shouldn't be anything.
No, there's no painting involved.
No, no, I mean if you work up your plane.
Yeah. And part of the discussion too, as we talked, is that when you get the plain surface, and Corey put it very well earlier Friday. He says, if you get a plain surface and you've got that large wall, the imperfections are going to show more in just that plain finish. Like if you have a painted wall with nothing on it. You know, you'll see the imperfections more where if you have like the aggregate finish or brick finish, those imperfections won't be as noticeable. So that's another pro and con between the plain walls versus the finished walls. But we did get a quote and the estimated value of the finishes is somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000. Without giving that specific quote we got from the supplier. But it's in that neighborhood. So that would be the value of the exterior wall panel finish alternates. So with that knowledge, if you still like to keep it as an alternate, we certainly can. We just have to identify.
As an alternate, I would think that would be, that'd be number four, right?
Well, I guess we have to put it, what order we.
I mean, it would be one of the four.
Yeah, it'll be one of the four, yep.
Well, my personal feeling on it is I'd like to just wipe out this fully adhered roof system. Look at what we would be saving there and then reconsider it for the exterior wall panel finish. Making that an alternate.
Yeah.
As one of them.
And we certainly could then, yeah, we could put the fully adhered roof.
I just can't see spending the money for for an adhered roof. I don't think that it's, that's only my opinion, I just don't think it's. Richard does bring up a possibly valid point about insurance cost. I have no idea if that would be.
You know, I have my doubts whether that's going to make any difference in an insurance rating. I've never seen that or heard of it. Like when we get our renewals and they go through all these questions about buildings and alarm systems, security, all these different things. I've never seen a question about roofing, you know, adhered roofing. I've never seen anything like that side really doubt whether that's going to make any difference in, you know, an insurance rating.
I think if we do choose to keep it as an alternate, it would be the last alternate listed. Because it would be the last thing we'd spend the money on.
The roof.
The roof.
Yeah, here, here, Paul.
Yeah. The flagpoles, we listed as number one just because in that first design meeting where we did our first shot identifying these, it was felt that most fire stations do have flagpoles. It's hard to go around a fire station anywhere in the state of Minnesota or the United States where you don't see a flagpole out front. And in the relative scheme of things, relative to the rest of the building, they're a fairly low dollar item. So that's why they were listed as the first alternate.
And how low a dollar?
Well, you're probably in the, you're probably in the less than $5,000. Because you've got.
$1,500 or?
You've got like, you've got three poles with lighting so that the flags are illuminated. But it's something that certainly you wouldn't have to do. You could add in later. So that's why we separated out so we get a price from the contractor. If you felt it was not a good price, you wouldn't have to do it. And you could do it through volunteer efforts or through a local contractor. That's why that was identified as number one. The exterior panel wall finish, if we want to leave that as an alternate, I could see that based on the quote information we got with it being between $5,000 and $10,000 probably being number two. Because the entrance treatment is going to be the most expensive item. That's probably going to be in order, you know, of like $50,000. So I'd see us being more likely to accept the wall panel finishes if we got good prices before you do the entrance treatment. Or put another way, if you felt you had the money to do the entrance treatment, you'd have the money to do the wall panel finishes as well. So I'd almost put it as number one, and this is just my thinking. Number one being the flagpoles, number two being the wall panels, number three being the entrance, and four, if you want to leave it as an alternate, would be the fully adhered roof.
And I'd agree with that ranking except personally, I would say, strike the premises. Waste anyone's time in considering it because the likelihood of choosing it is so low.
Okay, and just go down to three alternates then? Certainly do that too.
Sounds reasonable to me. You gentlemen are in agreement?
I would put the exterior wall panel as number one, but that's just me.
Either way, would you find?
If we're thinking about a local contractor for the kitchen cabinets, I would think the possibility of a local contractor for the flagpoles and lighting would also work if being so cheap.
It could, but it would be worthwhile to get a bid.
Yeah, another thought too is that if you don't do the wall finishes at the time you build the building, you'd be very hard pressed to come back and put them on later.
Yes.
If you don't do the flagpoles, when you do the building, you're going to always add the flagpoles later. So, Richard, maybe you're right in that the wall panels should be number one.
But the price might be better through a contractor doing it at this time.
But we could certainly make.
It'd be good to get that price.
Yes, we could make wall panels.
We're down to three alternates now.
Yeah, okay. So we could make.
It's a number imminently reasonable.
So you took the flagpoles off of the list?
No, I think we just moved it down to two. Moved it down to wall panels one, flagpoles two, entrance three. And it sounds like fully adhered roof system would be stricken altogether.
Yeah.
And we'll summarize this all again when we go to make the motion so that we have a, we have a summary of it and the direction. Okay, so that's the alternates.
Let me, one comment in that is with the fully adhered roof system, check on the insurance on that. Because I know I have seen roofs where they've been ballasted and the wind has peeled the roof off. Whereas the roof adhered system, that has not happened. Same roof, same windstorm. Now, whether an insurance company cares or not, that's a whole other story. But I think it's worthwhile checking in.
Well, just to keep it there, it's an alternate.
Yeah, right now, we're down to three, it could be four.
Put that back, number four actually could. I suppose included as number four. If an investigation is. A difference in insurance.
Yeah. And enough of a difference in insurance for $10 a year is certainly not.
We could certainly leave it as number four. And by the time we take the bids, we've done our investigation and we know there's no difference in insurance, you simply wouldn't, yeah, wore that alternate.
Yeah. Or better yet, don't bother with.
Precondition addendum before the bids come in saying, strike alternate number.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, okay. Updating my notes, all right. So I think that's everything for the alternates. The next thing is the unit price work. And for this, on the large, the large figures that are attached at the back of the memo, go to the second to last page. In the lower right hand corner, you'll see the letter C-4.
No.
Back one more page. Doug, you got it? Someone looks like they've got the different colors on it.
That one might have some.
Oh. Be the second to last. Got a red box, a blue box and a green box on it. Second to last. Second to last page. Yep.
I'm getting my confusion.
It's in the C-4.
I had two C-5s, that's why I was getting confused.
There you go, that's the one, okay. So you can see, now we're talking about unit price work, which is items that we'll have in the project, and we'll get a price per foot for the, from the contractor. And then we can choose whether or not we want to build it for that price per foot, or we can choose how much we want to go. That curb line that I got circled in the red, that one is currently in the plan as unit price work. And you can see that little yellow no right bullet, it's highlighted, it says, "See unit pricing in the specification for the concrete curb and gutter." So that one's already in the plan, we can certainly leave that one in the plan as unit price work. What we talked about on Friday is the one I got circled in the blue down there. Since that's the high side of the drainage, and the drainage is all flowing away from that curb line, we don't need that curb for drainage control, it just, it simply is a border of the parking lot that's protecting the edge of that black top from gravel and disintegrating over time. So that's one where if you wanted to change that to unit price work, so we potentially save that dollar amount, which we guessed was somewhere around a three thousand to thirty-five hundred dollar value of that curb line, we could make that change in a matter of, you know, half a day. And we could update this plan sheet, update the information in the specification. So that's a very easy change for us to argue. The other we could consider changing is the one that we've got circled in green, which is on the exit driveway from the beginning of the building. Again, that's the high side of the drainage, so we don't need it for drainage, it's just there as a border on the edge of that driveway. But this one, in our work session on Friday, the fire chief had recommended against changing that into unit price work. He wanted to keep that, so it defined the edge of that exit driveway. When the trucks are tearing out of that building in a hurry, that they've got that well-defined driveway to follow. So we want to make sure we've got your proper direction on the unit price work for issuing the plans to the potential bidders. My recommendation would be we leave that one in red, just as it is, as unit price, and we change that blue one to unit price. But the green one, I would recommend we go with the fire chief's recommendation, and leave that curb in the plan. So with that, I wanted to get your discussion and direction on that.
We're gonna be talking a little bit about parking.
We're gonna talk about that as well, yep.
Okay, so that would be in conjunction with this.
Correct, yep.
Okay. And that's in itself a reason for listing it that way, isn't it?
Well, part of the reason too is, we can talk, if you want to talk about the parking lots too before we finish this, we can... Okay, flip to the very next page then. And this is the sheet that we looked at on Friday. It's the very last page of the packet.
Getting my fingers to work.
And what we talked about on Friday, for Richard's benefit and for the benefit of the audience, is we did check the code requirements versus the parking. And it's showing up in that gray box up in the upper-left corner. What the code requires for the building, for the public parking lot on the south side of the building, is thirty-one stalls. That's what the required for the office area is, thirty-one stalls. What we have right now provides forty-three under the current plan. So we could eliminate that box that we got outlined there in that pinkish-red color. That would reduce sixteen stalls and get us down to twenty-seven. Adding in the seven stalls that we've got on the west side of the building, those two together would give us thirty-four, and we'd still meet the code requirements. So that's a change we could make without too much difficulty. It'd be updating this sheet, updating the grading plan a little bit. But it's something we can do to eliminate that surface area, that parking lot, and probably save about fifteen thousand dollars in construction costs. So that was one discussion we had. The other discussion we had was up in the northwest corner of the parking lot. It would be a right angle like that, there may be some wasted space up there. So we talked about looking at trying to reconfigure that parking lot to shrink that corner, reduce some surface area. In terms of the parking stalls, we had looked that we have twenty-nine parking stalls between that north line, which is twenty-two, and the west side, which is seven. So we have twenty-nine stalls there for thirty firefighters that are in the parking. So after the discussion, my notes from it, what I heard was, the consensus was, we didn't necessarily want to eliminate any stalls, but we wanted to see if we could reconfigure the parking lot to reduce some of the surface area and save on the cost of the black top and the gravel, which probably costs about three dollars and fifty cents a square foot. So if we can cut a thousand square feet out of the parking lot, we'll save thirty-five hundred bucks. If we can cut two thousand square feet out of the parking lot, we'd save seven thousand bucks. So that was a discussion on that. So that's something where I'd take your direction tonight from that. It wouldn't be unit price work, it wouldn't be an alternate. It's something I would just simply revise the plan, and I would issue a new plan sheet and tell the bidders, this is the plan sheet for the parking lot, bid off of this plan sheet, and it would just become part of the base bid. The curving that we just talked about, where we had those areas identified, the three lines in the red, the blue, and the green, that would be unit price work. So even if we shrunk this south parking lot by the sixteen stalls that we're looking at, the rest of that curb line would still be an optional curve that we could choose to buy by the foot, or we could choose not to buy.
And then there's a section of the driveway here, if you don't...
That would simply go away, yes, yep. But for now, I...
So that's where the snow...
Yeah, we'd issue the plan as-is with that whole curb line chosen as optional, until I can get the plan updated with the smaller parking lot shown, and then we'd just issue a new plan. So those are the directions I wanted to get from you. First of all, on the unit price of the curb work, the red line, the green line, and the blue line. And the recommendation there would be to keep the red line as optional, unit price work. To make the blue one unit price work. The green one, no, I would recommend going with the fire chief's recommendation.
I agree with that. That's the way I would have wanted to.
Okay. Sounds like we're consensus on that. And then as far as the parking lot changes, the direction I'd be looking for, if you want to go with the discussion we had on Friday and what I just kind of restated for you, would be to reduce the south parking lot by sixteen stalls.
Yes.
And then to reconfigure the north parking lot to preserve the number of parking stalls, but try and reduce the surface area. And I don't know exactly how I was gonna look at it, my technician and I will start playing around with the layout tomorrow. I've got a couple ideas that I've catched up, but I haven't had any work on it yet until I got your direction. But that would be sufficient direction, I think, for the record, that you're directing me to change this plan. It would give us what we need to get the plan updated and issued for the bidders.
Cutting down the public parking area, absolutely. I think that's totally, we're all agreed. The messing with that corner, I am really ambivalent over whether that's worth the time and trouble, and you'll have to run computer simulations to see how the traffic would flow through there. I'm not sure, I'll leave that up to these other fine gentlemen to voice their opinions.
And, yeah, to me, I'm fine with it either way, it's whatever you prefer to have us do.
One of the questions you had was if the truck could make the pass, or you're not sure about that.
Well, we, as part of our computer design, we can model the truck. And I was explaining to the fire chief before, I mean, it actually shows the wheel path. We put in the designed vehicle that we want, and we literally drive it through the parking lot, and it tracks the wheel path, so we know where the curb lines need to go. And it also tracks the bumper, so we know if it's running into the walls or anything like that.
No, forget what you're doing there and start playing Candy Crash.
No. So, but we would utilize that with part of the design. What I envisioned is rather than being a right angle like it is now, it would wind up being rounded. We'd round it around in that corner, and the stalls would be pulled in on a curve rather than on that square. Which gets back to some of what we discussed about Friday, the ease of snowplowing.
That, and obviously it would be bringing the vehicles parked over there closer to the...
They'd get a little closer to the building, yep.
Closer to the building and closer to the trucks.
The other thing that you can see in our storms, where we, that black dot, we have a catch base and a collection point up in that corner. So if we round that corner and pull that curb line down, then I'm probably gonna have to slide that collection point down, which means installing some more pipe. So some of the cost savings of reducing the surface area will be used to extend that pipe another, you know, thirty or forty feet, whatever it winds up being. So there's give and take on that one. I agree, the south parking lot is pretty straightforward, we can do that one. And there's really no reason not to. The north corner, the northwest corner, is open to a little more deliberation.
Joe, my experience with this north parking lot, if I had a choice and I'm driving, I would prefer it to be as it's shown here, instead of radius. Because when you're driving along, you're making a radius, everything is changing as you go. You're watching this end and this end, right here. You're driving the truck in, you know that the cars will park this way. You automatically, in your own vision, realize that I have so much space between these cars and the building. You know that. Just automatically focuses in your mind. Where if you're going this way around, like you're going around a curve. If you look at the curve, you should look through the curve, you know, when you're driving, okay? It would, in my opinion, be easier letting it as-is.
It kind of gets the cars more all the way.
Yes. Now, if it costs more to do it that way versus this way, okay, I could understand that too. But that's my preference, from the standpoint of driving.
And if it costs some more for Joe and his team to, according to time, to model this and come up with a recommendation.
Yeah, and realistically, well, we'd have to develop the layout, we'd have to revise the grading plan, that's one sheet. The utility plan for the effect on the storms, where there's two sheets. The curb and gutter plan and pavement plan, that's three sheets, and then the pavement marking plan. So once we get the layout done, we have to go through, we have to update four of the plan sheets.
Would not have to mess with or change in this south parking lot?
We'll have to do the same for there, but that one's straightforward because we're not laying on anything new, we're just shrinking it. We were saying, this part is just going away.
It shows...
It doesn't affect, well, it doesn't affect the utility plan, so that plan would not need to be changed.
Yeah, the three drains are here, it doesn't affect this other...
Correct, and that's why I stopped it where I did, so it didn't change the drainage pattern. We'd have to change the grading plan a little bit, but it'd be very minor because we'd just be changing it from the black top to the rest. Yeah, we wouldn't be introducing any curves or anything, so the south one's very much more straightforward to do than the northwest corners.
With that, south one, with the shrinking, we'd eliminate one light.
Correct. Yes, yes, we potentially eliminate one overhead light pole. Which I think, or recall right, I think the value of that pole is somewhere in the four to five thousand.
Yeah, that sounds correct.
So really, the total savings from that south parking lot is probably gonna be about twelve to fifteen thousand dollars for the parking lot itself, plus another four to five in the light. So you're somewhere in the neighborhood of sixteen to twenty thousand dollars of construction cost savings. Moves from that south.
Well, we, you know what, Mr. Hanky deals on this. I, as I said, can go either way, I'm inclined to say I favor leaving it alone, but... Up to you to decide. I'll defer to the truck driver, because he's dealt with it. Thank you. Move on to the rest of the groups.
John, is there a big difference from the snowplowing maintenance aspect of if it's straight rather than a curve?
Either way, I mean, straight, you just push straight off, but same with curves, so.
Richard?
I go for the south parking one, and other than that, six, twelve. Half a dozen.
Six, one, and half dozen the others. You're traveling the same fence I am, just a little bit further down. Well, that sounds like the consensus then is to leave the northwest corner as it is, take the sixteen stalls out and the one light, and that would...
Okay, so, then let's summarize where we're at and make sure that it's the motion that the council wants to support. So we'd keep the plans. As far as the alternates, alternate number one would be the exterior wall panel finish. Alternate number two would be the flagpoles. Alternate number three would be the entrance treatment. Alternate number four would be the fully adhered roof system. With the understanding that we'd investigate the insurance implications, and if we find out there is no savings, we'd issue an addendum to potentially eliminate that alternate. If there is an insurance savings, then we'll leave it in, and we'll get a price for doing it. So that's where we're at in the alternates. As far as the unit price work, we're, that's the three, the colored lines, the red, the blue, and the green. We're leaving the red one in as alternate, or, excuse me, as unit price work, just as it currently shows. We're gonna add the blue curb line in as unit price work, once the parking lot has been reduced. And the green one, we are keeping in the bid. We're not changing that to unit price work. That will stay in the base bid as a concrete curb. That's in accordance with the fire chief's recommendation. Okay, and then as far as the other minor changes, reducing the south parking lot by sixteen stalls, yes. Reconfigure the north and west parking areas, it sounds like the consensus is no, leave as is. Oh. Under the alternates again, what we had identified as an alternate for the LED lighting has now become part of a base bid.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. So then when we get to that point, the motion would be to approve the plan specifications with the LED lighting in the base bid. The alternates one, two, and three, and four as identified. The unit price work for the west curb line and the south curb line, and the direction to reduce the south parking lot by sixteen stalls. Okay, very good. Moving on to the rest of the memo, item number three, there are the advertisements for bids. We want to just confirm the logistics, because if the council is inclined to approve the plan tonight, we are ready to actually set a bid date and authorize the advertising for the bids. Looking at the council calendar layout, the next regular meeting after tonight will be June fourteenth, because there's five Tuesdays in May. And looking at the advertising schedule, we can get the bid opening in time where we could actually have a work session the night of the next regular council meeting, we could have a work session, say at five-thirty or six PM that night, and actually review the results of the bid. And assuming that we can get USDA to take a look at those and concur with the outcome, if everything falls into place, we actually could consider awarding a contract then that night. If we're not quite ready to, we could simply review the bids that night and...
This June third date is allowing eight weeks for the council to approve.
You're getting a little ahead of me, but that's coming up in my next comments. In the advertisement for bid that gets published in the newspaper, we need to specifically state the time and date for the bid opening and the location. And that's at the bottom of page two of my memo, what we had recommended would be two PM on Wednesday, June eighth, with the location being here at City Hall. And I would come down for that, and Corey would come down for that, and we'd open them with the administrator right here at City Hall. That would give us time then to, we could put the raw results in the packet, because the packet would be due at the end of the day Thursday. But by the following Tuesday, we could have gone through all the numbers, listed out the table with the alternate, so we could look at the different combinations, and be ready to discuss those with council the following Tuesday. So that would be our recommendation. If you're inclined to agree with that, that's fine, otherwise if you have other thoughts, certainly can discuss that. Going on to the next page, how the schedule would lay out. We're here tonight on May ten, and we'd be considering approving the plan and specifications and authorizing publishing the ad in the newspaper. Uh, over the next seven days, Cory and I would work to update the documents with your direction then on the alternates and the unit price work, and if I can get it done in time, that, that change at the south parking lot as well. May eighteenth, uh, would be when the ad would be published in the official city newspaper, which is the Canyon Leader. We'd also schedule to publish it in the Rochester newspaper that day too, which is a, a city of the first class, which is one of the requirements for, um, due to the size of the project being more than two hundred thousand dollars, that would publish either in a trade journal or a city of the first class. So we'd publish next Wednesday in this Canyon paper and the Rochester newspaper. And then we'd also post it on the electronic websites where the contractors go to look for projects, the Quest website and the Builders Exchange websites. That would start the clock on the twenty-one day advertising period that's required by statute. So that twenty-one day advertising period would end on June seventh. So then June eighth would be day twenty-two, which we would be legal to open the bids. Now, the star I put down there refers out of that footnote where, if you remember, USDA is reviewing the financial application down in Kansas City, the Office of General Counsel. And they have to officially give us the approval before we can bid the project. Our specialist in Faribault, Lori Valada, has told us that that review at Kansas City typically takes between six, six and eight weeks. It got submitted to Kansas City on August, or, excuse me, April sixth, which was the day after our meeting, um, with Lori. So if you count out the eight weeks from April sixth, that puts us at June first. So, if we'll offer an eight-week review period by Kansas City, we should get that approval a week before our scheduled bid date, and we will, we'll know that we're good then to accept the bids. If something happened, if we got to the end of that week, June third, and we didn't have that approval in hand yet, what we could do is issue an addendum to push the bid date back a week, if we need to, to give more time for Kansas City to finish their work. But I would think by June first, we're gonna have some kind of response, and either that everything's good, we can go ahead, or that something's something went amiss in the process. And again, we scheduled that June eighth, we're recommending June eighth meeting so that we can be ready to review the information with you at your next regular meeting on June fourteenth. And what we're recommending is we have a work session early that night in advance of the council meeting, so we can sit down and just talk about uh, this item, go through all the numbers, make sure you understand them, and have a com, a comfort load with them. And then at seven P M., we could potentially consider awarding the contract. And then again, the footnote is that USDA has to concur with the award contract. So if we get the bids on the eighth, we can give them to Lori or Faribault, and she can get through them and get back to us by seven P M. on the fourteenth, that she's good with us awarding, then we could take the action that night. If she hasn't gotten back to us by then, what we could do is simply review the bids at the work session, but then at the council meeting, we wouldn't be able to act, we'd have to schedule a special meeting, um, once she's issued her concurrence, and we'd schedule a special meeting then to award the contract. So that is an overview of how the, the schedule would lay out, if you want to move forward tonight, on our recommendation for the time and date of the bid opening. So, uh, any questions from council? Information regarding the advertisement for bids or the full schedule?
Appears that we may have run out of questions. That being the situation, I would make a motion if we approved Resolution twenty sixteen dash fifteen, Resolution to approve the plan specifications and authorizing call for bids with the alternates approved here.
LED lighting as part of the base bid.
LED as part of the base bid.
Alternate number one being the exterior wall panel finish. Alternate number two being the flag poles with lighting. Alternate number three being the entrance treatment. Alternate number four being the fully adhered roof system.
Yes.
And the unit price work being the west concrete curb line and the south concrete curb line.
What he said.
And direction to reduce the south parking lot by sixteen stalls.
Yes.
We'll see.
Does that all make sense, Pam?
Got it all down?
We'll see.
I sort of wanted to restate it in order, so that it was all together.
I second that. Thank you. Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Wonderful. We move ahead again.
So we'll, we'll get the ad for bid completed with this information and we'll have it published next Wednesday.
Update, oh, excuse me, patching and overlay project on Seventh Street on Yorick Street.
This one should go a little quicker, I hope.
It could be considered a simpler.
Yes, and it's, it's, it's good news, actually. The, uh, City Public Works Department got a quote from Batunus Materials, uh, LLC to do some street work for the city this year. You'll recall that this is the company that did work in the city last year. The quotes included in your packet along with a memo that I put together reviewing the quote. The quote has two parts to it, the first part is milling and overlaying, where they come in, they grind off the, the top inch and a half of the pavement, and then they, they clean up the street, and then they put down the new inch and a half pavement. The price they gave you for that, well, the area would be Seventh Street from Red Wing Avenue to Forest Street, and it's noted that it's only half the street width. And then the other street would be Forest Street from Sixth Street to Fifth Street. Uh, the total square yardage they provided in the quote was three thousand nine hundred and sixty-five. The price they quoted is thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, fifty cents. That equals a price of eight dollars and sixteen cents a square yard. The price they gave you last year to do this very same work on, on some other streets in town was nine dollars and seventy-five cents a square yard. So the price this year is cheaper than the price for last year.
Certainly.
And if I had just done an estimate, I, I, I roughed out an estimate before I knew what their dollars per square yard, and I just looked at the quantities and roughed out an estimate, I came up with about ten dollars a square yard. So they gave you a, a very reasonable price, it's cheaper than I would have estimated then. So that's for the milling and overlay work. The other work they propose is some patching, and that's at two intersections, Seventh Street at Forest and Seventh Street at Spring. Those areas are smaller, they're just small, isolated, damaged areas, total about a hundred and fifty-five square yards. That's one where they'd take all the black top off, take it down to the gravel, they'd check the gravel, see if it's soft and needs to be corrected and all, if they, if they, if does, they gave you a price to do that as well, and then they would put all the pavement in. The base price they gave you for just doing the, um, the, the pavement removal and repaving, four inches thick, uh, works out to twenty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents a square yard. They didn't do any of this kind of work last year, so we don't have a, a number from them to compare to, but when I went through and put together what I would give a reasonable estimate, I came up with thirty-two dollars a square yard. So I think the number they gave you was reasonable. If they have to do soil corrections down below the pavement, they gave you a, a price of twelve dollars and fifteen cents per square yard. I estimated twelve dollars a square yard, so I think they're right in the ballpark on that number as well. So, um, to summarize, uh, I think their quote is, is good, I think they gave you very good prices on both the milling and overlay and the patching. They gave you a reasonable price on the soil correction if they needed to do that. And I, I would have no objection to accepting this quote and, uh, hiring Batunus Materials LLC to perform this work. Did we get any other bids? I don't believe that the city got any other quotes this year. Last year, they got two quotes. And the second quote was, yeah, it was not equivalent. So I think that based, based on how last year went and, and the, the quality of the work.
They have a good deal of experience with this company and a real comfort level with the work they do. Did they give any timeframe?
Actually, no, no, I didn't solicit the quote, I'm not sure if,
Yeah, they, they give a timeframe, but basically, they would say the next, or by the end of the end of July, I don't anticipate they're gonna get out there, maybe, well, they can't get out yet, it's not long enough, but.